The Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees. I call to order the meeting of Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, July 24th, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherryburg, Pasadena, Texas at 5:33 PM. Board members present are Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mrs. Vicki Morgan, and myself, Maris Elke Hahnell. Board members absent is Mrs. Nelda Sullivan. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that a notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapters 551. The invocation will be given by, Mr. Bailey, pledges and the pledges by Mr. Roberts?
Can we pray? Lord, Father, we just thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for your love and your grace. Lord, we thank you for this school district. We pray for our country, Lord. We pray for our state. We pray for our school district, pray for the employees and those people that are associated, however they are, with our district. We just pray for them this summer, that you keep them safe and help them to relax and, Lord, bring them back safe. We pray especially tonight for the Ortiz family. We just pray that you be with them and comfort them, give them a sense of peace. Lord, again, we pray for the district, pray for the leadership of this district, that you give them wisdom, foresight, Lord, all as we ask, in Christ's name, amen.
Place the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We will now adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. 551.071 to consult with district attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act when the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer. 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purpose exchanged lease or value of real property. We will reconvene shortly. Thank you. We reconvene at 7:02. Welcome, everyone. We go to Section 3, Consent Agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Vicki Morgan, a second by Mr. Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to Section 4, Personnel Section. Consideration of Possible Approval of Administrative Personnel.
Madam President, I move that we approve addenda pages A through D.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Morgan?
Yes, I'd like to introduce these that we just named. Is Michelle Malvo here? Michelle has been named counselor at South Houston High School. We congratulate you. I see you brought family with you. Would you like to introduce them, please?
Yes, my daughter Jalen and my daughter Helen.
Next is Timothy Verden. Is Timothy here? Hi, Timothy. Timothy has been named counselor parent coordinator at Atkinson Elementary. I know you have friends here. Do you have family with you?
No.
Okay, congratulations. We are your family. Next is Janice Merritt. Is Janice here?
Yes.
Hi, Janice. Janice has been named diagnostician with special education, and we congratulate you in your new position. Do you have family with you?
Yes.
Hi, Anita. Next is Christine Koppich. Hi, Christine. Christine has been named principal of Williams Elementary. And I know you have family with you. Would you like to introduce them to us?
I have my husband Jake, this is my daughter Emma, my son Jaycee, my daughter Lily, my parents, Jared up there. My parents, Mark and Edward Oliver, my grandmother-in-law, mother-in-law, Nancy Koppich, and Betty Paredor, and a few more people that I don't know.
Good.
My Roberts, admin team here, Joyly, Rebecca, Gracie, Joronda, Emily, Jennifer, and Lashandra, Tracy, and John T. Powell back there, tons of the Williams family, and I'm super excited to do that. And then just some leaders in the room that are definitely in good with me, Ken Edmond, Alita, Lorna Palmer, Joyly Connaughton, of course, Fred Roberts.
Yeah.
Just thank you so much to Dr. Bell, Fred Roberts, of course, all the other board members. I'm so excited to be here.
Fred, you were to stay out of this.
Hey, I could be one of the no-boffers. Far enough to let you.
Thank you. And that's all.
Well, we're very excited for all of you. Congratulations. And if you're here supporting anyone who would like to slip out at this time, you're more than welcome to do so. Get some rest, Joyly.
Hey, did you get back?
From India.
Right here, souvenirs. Did you find any?
He was at the Taj Mahal.
Beautiful pictures.
I don't know what souvenirs they have over there.
I don't either.
I'm sure a little replica.
I don't know any.
I sent him off, brought me a million dollars.
I've never been there.
I don't know what, it's not worth but a buck.
Oh, they got stuff. Root beef?
Yeah.
They got stuff. He could've brought a walkie-talkie. I probably watched our grandkids wherever I go.
Everybody has to move forward.
All the bad news come forward, please.
Item number 2, Consideration of Possible Approval of the Benefit Changes for 2019.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion?
Board members, I just want to remind you that there are increases. Our insurance committee met, and I know you were informed on the outcome of those meetings. This will bring what we predict, an additional 2.5 million to the fund, which is greatly needed. And we do have Maggie Parker here from Gallagher, she'll wait, just in case you have any questions. We always appreciate her work, as well as Bob, and then, of course, Keith and Don and all the new folks that we have coming onboard that have worked on this as well. And the insurance committee, if they're here, if they want to stand and be recognized, if you're a member of the insurance committee, if anybody came. All right. Thank you. We got some people. Just a few representatives tonight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 3 is Certified Personnel, and Pages 205 to 209 is for information only. Item number 4, Support Personnel, is for information purposes only as well.
Madam President, before we leave Personnel, I think it would be appropriate for us to once again thank Keith Palmer for his dedication and service to our district. This will be his last meeting, and he's going to be missed. And as I've said before, you've got some big shoes to fill, Tony.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Keith. Nice necklace.
You know, we all echo that, and I bet everybody in this room as well. Section 5, Education Section, item number 1, Consideration of Possible Approval of the 2018-19 Pre-K High Parents Student School Handbook.
So move.
Question.
I have a motion by Vicki, Mrs. Morgan, a second by Marshall Kendrick. Discussion, Mr. Roberts?
On page 26, where in the manual where it talks about technology being brought to the classroom, it's fairly open, but I'm sure they're talking about smartphones, basically is what they're talking about, because smartphones are today's encyclopedia. My question is, and I request that somebody look at it, a lot of the kids are wearing, and I showed you a while ago, those old earbuds or whatever they are, dangling. That is a process of communicating between each of the students. They can actually send a text message that will be verbally given to somebody just through their earbuds. And I think we need to look at either requiring them not to be worn, not to be, either that or be, I mean, I don't care if they have the earbuds in their pocket, but don't put them in their ears. And the reason is, they're communicating each other. I think it's a safety hazard. I think it's a method of trying to get by with something. I think kids that are in the cafeteria, and a kid was taking a test or something, somebody could help along with that communication. You don't have to push a button. All you have to have is it there. A teacher could ask a student a question, somebody on the other end can be listening to it, could tell that other kid what the answer was. So there's all kinds of situations with those earbuds that need those, and the little Bluetooth earbuds also. But most of them have the stringer type that just goes in both ears, and normally they just feel like one hang. I think that's something we need to look at as far as the student wearing it. You don't have to take them away from them, but I think they need to be stocked as far as being worn in the hall, being worn in the classroom.
Well, and we definitely have a student code of conduct where principals have that discretion now. It's built in with that principal discretion, but that's something we can look at as we review for next year and put things in place for 1920. But we can discuss it with principals, the ASCDs, just reminding principals, they do have that discretion to not allow those. It would be part of our code of conduct.
Okay, so in other words, we're going to wait till next year?
Well, for code of conduct, y'all previously approved it.
Right.
So it's already approved. But right now, currently, 1819, principals have, it's written in our student code of conduct, they can put that as a stop.
Sure.
Currently.
But if it's an issue of, we get back to that issue, whereas if this principal allows it and this one doesn't, to me, it's a district-wide thing, just like it was with phones and so on and so forth. We opened up the door to the smartphones, and I think that was a great idea. I think they use that on a positive method. But I believe the earbuds have some bad connotations to it that need to be addressed, and even though it's not in the code book, there's nothing to say that it cannot be stopped.
Well, I'll ask the ASCDs to work with principals and get us feedback from their side of that as well, so we can address it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 2, Consideration of Possible Approval of the Interlocal Agreement Between the Pasadena ISD and Harris County Community Youth Services to Provide a Youth Service Specialist for the Summit.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 3, We Have a Presentation on Safety.
Okay, board members, this will be a brief presentation as Troy comes up to pull it up on the screen. You also have a copy of it in front of you. Looks like this, should be at your spot.
Yeah.
Just giving you some overview of what we've been working on this summer, since the tragedy in Santa Fe and even before that, there was a lot of discussion regarding hardening of our schools and what we could do to be as proactive as possible. After Santa Fe, however, I felt it was necessary to talk to Darla Massey-Jones, who's our executive director of administrative services, to see if she'd be willing to kind of spearhead working with Mr. McCarty, working with our police department, and others within our district. And she's done a most outstanding job this summer. She's been boots-on-the-ground, running, 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 talking with principals, doing roundtables with district leaders and others within our district. And so I just kind of want to go over some of that with you, and then promise that she will be available in coming months to talk to you as well about updating you on what we have happening here in PISD. So the framework for safe schools, as you can see in front of you, is prevention, preparation, of course, responding if necessary, God forbid, and recovering. So just briefly, I want to go over that. June 27th, you'll see on that next slide, we held a Safety Steering Committee with various stakeholders. And of course, at that meeting, it was decided we need to continue those meetings throughout this coming school year with parents, students, of course, leaders, counselors, mental health resource workers, law enforcement. So you'll see that go on throughout the school year. And that's the District-wide School Safety and Security Committee. We held at the June 27th meeting roundtable discussions on these topics, best practices, what areas we felt like we need to focus on here in PISD, what training and support we had in place, and what we need to add, mental health resources, and of course, what we were addressing in that area of mental health, threat assessment, and then arming personnel was an item that we discussed at that committee to get feedback. So in the area of prevention, I can just go over these briefly with you. Facility enhancements, Kevin Foranoff presented on that. You know, as a board, you've approved millions of dollars in safety vestibles, cameras, the blue wave technology, the core locks on our buildings being changed out where teachers don't have to go out into the classroom to lock their doors. So we've had discussions even this summer about how we can further harden our campuses. I know we have an architect sitting in the room that's probably, can tell you, we have several architects, sorry about that, we've got a couple of them back there, that can tell you they're being asked by other districts about things like bulletproof glass and film and things of that nature. We met with our insurance representatives today, and they were talking about some other items that campuses and districts are looking at. So we are, of course, looking at future facility enhancements, and we'll keep you updated on those. We talked about our campus and department safety teams and making sure they're in place and working properly. See Something, Say Something, you know, that came in very useful to our campuses and our district and community as a whole. We will keep that in place. We're looking at text features to be added to that as well, so that students can either put that on our email, which then gets pushed out to our ASCDs and out to our campuses and goes at the same time to our police, and those things are investigated and, of course, looked into immediately. We're going to be doing next school year, and this is something that will be new, metal detector random drills. So we have the ability currently to go out with the metal detectors, the handheld wands, and do random drills at our campuses. Safety audits will continue. Of course, we're beefing up our crisis plan and reviewing it, making sure everything that possibly can be in there to help inform and educate will be placed in there. Behavioral and mental health systems of support and threat assessment. So that falls under the area of prevention. In the area of preparation, we, of course, again, will be working with tabletop drills. There'll be three required for each campus next year, and this will be rolled out at our August 2nd Administrative Council when principals come back. Two of those they'll do with their team, their administrative team and those other key players at their campus that they want to bring in. There'll be scenarios that they'll have to, of course, read and then take appropriate action based on those scenarios. But one, the police will actually be there and kind of audit and grade and give feedback on how they handled it and what their response looked like. Medical Emergency Response Team, and I don't know if we have April here, but April and Darla have done a fabulous job with our nurses and working with developing medical emergency or MERC teams at the campuses and at our departments. And then, of course, continuing that training focus in the area of preparation. As far as responding, you've participated in Alice Training, so you're very aware of what that looks like. At our Ad Council on August 2nd, the police will be doing Now What. In other words, we've rolled it out to staff, now we need to roll it out to all students and parents and community so they understand it as well. So the next steps, we will be doing a training on Stop the Bleed, and our nurses have been trained in that as well. Triage systems, go kits, and mutual aid agreements all fall under responding. And then in recovering, Barbara and her team helped very much so with Troy, and I give a lot of credit to Jamie, Bert, and others within her department with coming up with a plan that if we had to leave a building or a site, and we had to reunify parents and students at another site, which mainly we would be using Phillips Fieldhouse and Sagemont Church, which we have met with and done a lot of planning with, then we have systems in place to make that very orderly and very well executed. So counseling support and a communication plan as well falls under recovery. And then a topic that we've talked about as a team of eight, we talked about with that group, to investigate a school marshal, our guardian plan. I can tell you at this time, the administrators and the stakeholders who were at our June 27th meeting are not for this because of the liability involved and just all of the factors that are unknown. But we'll continue to investigate and hear from other stakeholder groups and provide you feedback on that as well. And then for 2018-19, just to go to training topics, just so you know, again, our August 2nd, when we rolled this out with all of our administrators, over 500-plus administrators in a district this size, the focus will be safety. We will, of course, work on threat assessment. I told you already about next steps for Alice, mental health resources, and that's just to name a few. So they'll have the opportunity to come together. Of course, we like to do all that kumbaya, how's your summer go, those few days that you had? And then we, of course, hear from the superintendent for about an hour, and then we'll have two breakout sessions. So each administrator will be able to choose two topics related to school safety that they can go and participate in. So we're looking forward to that day on August 2nd. So the last slide is just telling you, you know, it's a shared responsibility. This was a very brief update on what we have done this summer and will continue to do. Student safety in Pasadena ISD is the number-one priority. Our staff and our students have to be safe to learn and be successful. So we're going to bring you updates at a minimum every three months, so you know where we're at, where we're headed, what our committee feedback has been, and just continue to reevaluate, tweak, and improve as we go forward. So that is the update, and if you have any questions, myself or others in the audience can answer those.
How many schools have we trained with Alice?
I don't see any of our police here, but it's right at 40 campuses and departments. So most of the ones that were not trained have signed up for their teacher training days when they return. So by the time the students return, all of our campuses will be trained within those first weeks.
I appreciate the three months before.
Sure. I think it'll be useful. It'll give you an opportunity to see behind the scenes what's going on, because there's been a lot of work this summer that you don't get to see on a daily basis.
Deanne, you know, obviously, I believe that one of the major components of this is the behavioral and mental systems. Are we going to be educating our teachers that if they see an issue within the classroom, in the halls, whatever, that they know how to address it and how to get the student help? It's not going to be close your eyes and look the other way. It's going to be addressed immediately, hopefully.
And we're blessed in this district to have outstanding counselors and behavioral specialists. And Linda Rodriguez and her team, working with Robyn and Karen, will be presenting that very topic about mental health resources, threat assessment. All of that is very important in addressing kids. We feel like, and you know, I can't 100% guarantee that nothing tragic will ever happen here or at church or in the mall or movie theater or wherever the case may be, but what I feel like is, we need to make sure our kids are engaged in school, they're recognized by our staff when they are having good days and bad days and all of those in between, and they feel connected with their schools. When they have pride in their campuses and, of course, love for their teachers and administrators and that relationship is established, I feel like that's very important in some of the area of prevention.
Sometimes it only takes one person to connect with to keep that kid out of trouble. But, you know, I mean, that's obviously, I think, in all of these cases, that's key. That is, you know, that's really the key, is preventing.
Well, and that's why we use the See Something, Say Something.
Yeah.
And try to educate students, parents, community members, I mean, parents monitoring social media and, of course, watching, you know, what their kids are communicating about or seeing on their texts or their Snapchat or whatever the modem may be. I think it's very important that they raise the red flag when they see something that's disturbing or worrisome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think the See Something, Say Something is very critical.
Absolutely.
The city's our best protection, really, if they'll just do that.
How many ASCDs, how many See Something, Say Something alerts do you think you've got in the spring semester alone? I know it was in the thousands. 300?
Each.
Three, okay.
Good.
That's right.
They're the best source.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You did all the work.
Absolutely.
Item number 4, Consideration of Possible Approval of 1, Multiple Grant Awards; 2, The Acceptance of the Texas Education Agency 21st Century Community Learning Center, Cycle 10, Year 1 Positions; and 3, The Acceptance of the Bridge Up at Meninger Model Magic Grant Position.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Vicki Morgan, a second by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We can move forward now to Section 6, Student Achievements. Surprisingly enough, we don't have any this evening. Section 7, Policy Update and Review, we don't have any this evening as well. Section 8, Financial Section, item number 1, Consideration of Possible Approval of the Budget Amendments.
I move we approve the budget amendments.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We can move forward now to Section 6, Student Achievements. Surprisingly enough, we don't have any this evening. Section 7, Policy Update and Review, we don't have any this evening as well. Section 8, Financial Section, item number 1, Consideration of Possible Approval of the Budget Amendments.
I move we approve the budget amendments.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 2, Consideration of Possible Approval of the Renewal of the Interlocal Agreement with Tasby as Third Party Administrator for the Workers' Compensation 2018-19.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
I'll just bring your attention, board members, to the amount spent for each year. You can see that number going down back in '13, '14, and '14, '15, over a million dollars, close to $2. Last year was $399,590. So give a lot of credit to Monica in that area and her team for all the excellent work they do, and then, of course, across
So I'd like to take a revote on that, since we, since I did not mention that. So Section 3 Consent Agenda and C Information Summary of Purchase Orders Over 10,000, June 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2018.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We can move forward now to Section 6, Student Achievements. Surprisingly enough, we don't have any this evening. Section 7, Policy Update and Review, we don't have any this evening as well. Section 8, Financial Section, Item Number 1, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Budget Amendments.
I move we approve the budget amendments.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 2, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Renewal of the Interlocal Agreement with Tasby as Third Party Administrator for the Workers' Compensation 2018-19.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
I'll just bring your attention, board members, to the amount spent out for each year, or spent for each year. You can see that number going down back in 1314 and 1415, over $1 million, close to 2. Last year was 399,590. So give a lot of credit to Monica in that area and her team for all the excellent work they do. And then, of course, across the district, keeping people safe and out of harms way.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 3, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Salary Schedule Book for the 2018-19 School Year.
So move.
Second. Lots of seconds.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section number 9, Operations Section. Item Number 1, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Design Development Phase for the New Red Bluff Elementary School Replacement Project. And we have a presentation.
Board members, we have Jerry Bevel here from Create and Roger Brownlow, so, oh, change up, okay. A little change up on me.
Very good.
He's got to use a microphone. You can either use that one or come to one of these, wherever you like.
Let's try this one. Okay, so we've been meeting with the campus and the facilities group and refining the design that we showed, the concept that we showed you earlier. So tonight, we're going to take a quick tour of the new Red Bluff Elementary School. This is the existing site plan, so Red Bluff is diagonally across the bottom portion of that image, and Burl is over to the right, and Thomas Avenue is to the top. So that just kind of shows you the existing building layout, the residential areas to the east and to the south of the building. And then there's a city facility immediately to the west of the building, which I'll show you a little bit more about that. We're going to hopefully be able to use some of that to supplement construction parking on the site. If you remember, we will be building the building in phases, so we will initially be doing a demolition of two of the wings and the gymnasium on the building, so that we'll have the footprint area to start the new construction. So Phase 2 will be building the new building that's shown in blue in the center portion of the slide. And then after we get the new building constructed and everybody moved into it, then we'll demolish the remainder of the existing building and then work on constructing the final parking and drive layout. So we're looking at three phases at this current time. So here, the kind of drawing of the site. So again, Red Bluff is diagonally across the bottom of the drawing area, Burl is to the right, Thomas is across the top there. And that city facility is represented to the left of the green area, kind of that gray area that you see on there. The district has worked with the city and got an agreement where we will be able to use part of that for construction parking. So that helps tremendously with the phasing of the site and gives contractor good access to come directly to the area of the new building construction on the site.
And that agreement's at no cost? That's amazing.
Oh, that's awesome.
So thank you to the, thank you to the city for that.
Yeah, that's worked out really well, so that's going to be a great benefit to this project. So if we look at the site, then the gray is the new building footprint. To the south of the new building footprint, we have one of the major parking areas for the faculty on the campus. We have the gymnasium playground space in that area. And so this, one of the big issues is also parking, drive stack space on the side of that parking area. We have a large loop drive that goes around that area so that we can stack cars, a large amount of cars onto the site. Another feature is we're going to be adding an exit onto Red Bluff from the site, so we'll be able to exit directly onto Red Bluff from that portion of the site. And we have had meetings with the city and they've agreed to that in principle. We'll be doing a traffic study that they've requested, but we feel certain that that'll be forward. And I think everybody at the campus is very excited about that. To the east of the building, we have the parking area off of Burl, that would be your visitor parking area. And at this campus, you only have one special education bus, there are no other buses at the campus. So we're primarily dealing with cars and one bus. So that area will also be used as a car drop-off in the morning, and then the afternoon, that would be the pickup zone for the special ed bus. On the north end of the site, we have an entrance to the service drive coming into the building, and then we have playground space located close to the academic instruction areas. And the building is organized around the central courtyard in the center of the building with kind of activity areas to the south of that and academic areas to the north, east, and west of that courtyard space. Okay, if we go to the floor plan of the building, I'm going to show you overall, then I'm going to blow up the two parts of this so you can see it a little better. The main entry there is to the east side of the building, coming in off of Burl, so that would be the main entrance lobby to the building. The pink area immediately south of that would be the administration area. The library is shown in purple, immediately behind that entrance piece. And then dining and gym to the west side, special ed immediately below the library, and then computer and music on the lower part of the building. The courtyard in the center, and then the upper kind of shaped the building, the blue is the academic areas. We have four grade levels on the first floor and two upstairs. Get a blow-up plan. So now we're just going to look at that lower portion of the building. So here we can see coming in from the main entry to the lobby, the admin area is right there for visibility and control coming into the entrance area. That's our secure entrance vestibule also to control access to the building. There's a restroom in that, so no one, no public or visitors has to go to any part of the building. They just stay in that secure lobby area. And then, as I mentioned, the dining and gym area on the backside of the building. And we do have an operable wall between the dining and gym space, and the stage area is associated with the gym there. Food service immediately west of the dining area. And then the center of the building, the purple again, is the library space. Then below that, we have the special services programs, ABLE, SUCCESS, speech diagnostic, diagnostician, all those areas are there. And then the brown at the very bottom of that plan is the computer and music room for the facility. Looking now at the upper portion of the building, again, here we see the central courtyard, and then the blue again is the academic area. So we have first grade over to the east side toward Burl, second grade to the west side toward the city facility, and then pre-K and kindergarten is to the north side toward Thomas Avenue. And then we have additional instructional space in the core area, the center there. So science and art is immediately north of the central courtyard space and have direct access to come out to that courtyard area. And then the orange tone color immediately north of that are resource rooms and the peer facilitators for the campus. The instructional areas are all arranged around a central collaboration or multipurpose space. And then there are typically six classrooms for every grade level, exception of pre-K. There are four classrooms for pre-K, and they have shared restroom facilities between two rooms. And then all the other areas, they have faculty restrooms, storage and team meeting areas, and student restrooms as a part of their instructional area. The second floor of the building, third and fourth grade, is on the second floor of the building. So all that is aligned immediately above the grade levels below. And then in the center of the building, immediately north of there where it says courtyard below, we were kind of able to carve out a unique space in that that we're kind of referring to as the loft right now. So it's a little bit larger collaboration flex space for the upper grade levels to use in that area. And we have an image to show you in just a minute of that. But everybody's pretty excited about that space. So instead of just making it a circulation connector, we're able to make it a little bit more than that. I think it can give some great flexibility to the campus and for utilization of that space. This is a rendering or view of the main entry to the building. The gable roof shapes there, the main entrance going into the lobby space. To the left of that first gable is the admin area, has canopy all along the front of it facing toward Burl, and that'll be the pickup zone for special ed after hours in the building and drop off in the morning. And then the second gable that we see in the background there, that's actually the media center space. So I think we mentioned that we were looking at themes for the building and the campus has finalized. So we're doing a theme around state parks. And so kind of the lodge effect and the wood and the stone and stuff, and we'll be taking that throughout the building and incorporating murals and other elements based on working with the campus on that theme. This is a view of the entry lobby. We've just come into the entrance of the building. So the admin area, counter there is to the left, right under where it says Red Bluff Elementary School. They have a lot of community come into this campus. So the entrance lobby, its appearance and space, that was very critical to the campus. So you see, we have a lot of seating area there. They do have a lot of visitors to this campus. And then in the background, the far glass wall in the back is your security line. And then over to the right would be that public restroom area. This is a view of the library space in the building, so we're kind of standing in one corner looking across that. So again, we're taking that gable shape into this portion of the building. We're doing a combination of some wood elements and exposed structure in the area, again, to kind of tie into that nature and the park theme. And we have a very nice-looking tree on the back wall of the space.
I like the tree very much. Thank you. They had a scary tree.
That's a friendly tree.
So, so it does, not only is it, it kind of centers on the Kiva space, but it's also, we're using that some for acoustical treatment in the space also. So I think it'll be a very nice library space, and to the right, all that glass looks out to that central courtyard. This is one of the collaboration areas. This is actually in pre-K and K. So this is that multipurpose area outside of the classrooms. And then there are, as I mentioned, team meeting areas and storage areas for faculty and restrooms and drinking fountains. And all those things are contained in these central areas for each of the grade levels. And then this is that second floor space that we're right now referring to as the loft. So you can see, it's more than just circulation. We have opportunity to have technology out in this area. They can rearrange this and have presentations out there, student work groups. Again, different types of seating there, so we're just trying to give flexibility to this space and offer different opportunities for its use. This is our schedule, highlighted there in the yellow is where we are tonight on July 24th to present design development. That's the original date, and we're here tonight doing that. We're moving on to the next phase with your approval would be construction documents, which would be the technical drawings that will be utilized by the contractor during construction. We're scheduled to start construction in July of 2019. And then the first phase of the building would be open for August of 2020.
The building will be ready to be occupied by?
Of August 2020.
That first phase?
For the first phase, yes.
We got a slide, that's one?
Pardon?
No slide?
No slide.
Beautiful school.
It is beautiful. I have a question. And now it's slipped by. It'll come back. Maybe. Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
I agree. I think it, you know, like I said before, when we went to the other school and looked, it is absolutely, those kids, it is their safe haven. It's their place away from home where they can experience some sort of reality and, and being comfortable in their surroundings. My question was, you said that in the first phase, we're going to remove the gym. Where are the kids going to go for those activities then?
Well, the campus is kind of working on finalizing that plan now. Tammy's working closely with the campus staff and stuff like that. We, there will be some portable buildings that will be added to the campus to help the campus during this phase, but I think they're looking at different opportunities where those, some of those activities can occur. I don't think that's final final yet, but that's in progress right now, so.
And Lynn, we've had that before. They have used double portables, they've used outdoors cafeteria when it's not being utilized. So that, we have an excellent PE teacher there, one of our very best. So she'll be very creative in how they, and she won't miss a day, I promise, of physical experience.
I can guarantee you she will miss a day.
Okay, good.
What is the square footage of the library?
It's about, the total area is about 3,600 square feet, including support area.
Okay, it's not that big. But what is the future of libraries these days? The traditional library with books?
Be careful if our librarians are out there.
I mean, though, it's a valid question, I mean.
Let's have our architects answer that.
Well, I think it's changing, but particularly at the elementary level.
I know they are, I mean, but.
That's probably the one that's changing a little more slowly.
And it's probably more valid in elementary school than a high school.
So, but for instance, the, you know, we would be looking at doing the shelving on casters and stuff like that possibly so that things could be moved around and removed from that space if, as change does occur. I think kind of from what I understand, one of the things that's kind of holding that back some is technology and the cost to have some of the materials electronically is very expensive to the district. So that might spur it to move a little more quickly if that was addressed. But it is changing, but at elementary level, it's changing more slowly.
Sure, no, that makes sense. Thank you.
But we are trying to build flexibility into that space so that it can adapt to future needs.
Thanks.
We've had that conversation many times, but like I was sharing, some folks are on different pages in the research. We're still looking at that as well. No, CTHS was our first probably true project of changing what a library looks like. And so we're continuing to keep that in the conversation.
Well, you guys at Create do a phenomenal job of taking two parts and making a whole.
Thank you.
So you got another challenge, and you sure did a beautiful job at Palm Springs, I know you will here too.
We're excited about this one. I think this one will be equally.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, thank you.
I was in Chicago and they actually had a Britannica building. And I was like, where do they actually sell encyclopedias these days? That's how I did my research, right? We don't actually vote on this.
No.
Okay.
Well, consideration and possible approval.
Okay, on the design. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, oh, now we need a motion.
No, that's what I was going to say.
We need a motion.
I move that we approve the consideration and possible approval of, uh, nope, that's not it. The design development phase of the new Red Bluff Elementary School Replacement Project.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Kendrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 2, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA, Number 25, for the new May Smith Elementary School Replacement Project.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion?
Are we going to be in the school on time?
Kevin shaking his head yes.
Oh, good, good.
Beautiful school.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 3, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA, Number 29, for the new Doby High School Ninth Grade Campus Project.
So move.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 4, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Budget and Design Services Agreement for the Roof Replacement Package. Number 1, project included in the 2017 Bond Program.
So move.
Second. Question.
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Mr. Friday?
Our standard is a single ply membering, the white, white roof.
And they've helped out pretty, pretty well.
As long as you don't walk on them.
Yeah. We try and place walk pads on there too, so we can kind of direct traffic, but you don't stay on those.
What's the product they're using nowadays? Is it still EPDM or what is it?
A TPO. We've used PVC, but they tend to break down a little bit faster, so our standard is a TPO.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 5, Consideration and Possible Approval of a Construction Contract for the Roof Replacement Package, 1 Project Included in the 2017 Bond Program.
So move.
I have a motion by, a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Marshall Kendrick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item, Section 10, Construction Update. There's a hand. There's a handout if anyone has any questions. Section 11, Miscellaneous Section. Item number 1, Communications. There's none at this time. We do not have any public comments at this time as well. Item number 3, this item is being pulled for a later time. Item number 4, the next date for a regular board meeting is suggested for Tuesday, August 28th, 2018.
So moved. You going to be here, Freddie?
You know, I don't know, but if I am, I expect a gift to you.
I have a motion by.
It's my birthday, please. Anybody here wants to know?
I have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And our meeting adjourns at 7:50. Good night, everyone.